I'd like to call the order Concord Township Zoning Commission for Tuesday, March 4th, 2025. Heather, can we have a roll call of members?
Mr. Wirtel?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Eifelies?
Here.
Mr. Rappert?
Here. Second on the agenda is approval of minutes. We don't have any, so we will move on to correspondence. John, have you had any correspondence?
No, sir.
Rich Peterson?
No, nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Rich Eifelies?
Nothing for me, Mr. Chairman.
And nothing for the chairman. So zoning inspector report. Now I know we have something here.
Okay, sure, just a quick update on the department activities for February. We processed 20 zoning permit applications and of that, a few of them were for a couple new businesses that are going to move to Concord within existing buildings, but still exciting, right? So over at the Grissmell Plaza, Mail Plus is going to be going in, like a mail copy center. They're going to have, I think, UPS boxes in there as well, right next to Pub Fredo. That unit's been vacant for several years. And then there's a dental office going in at the Drug Mart Plaza where the workout facility used to be that Humble that was there for just a short time. And then there's a carpet cleaning business, Clea Carpet LLC, that's going to go into the kind of industrial complex off of Auburn Road at 7757. So those are three new businesses that we approved permits for. We did 59 zoning permit inspections at different properties, issuing 10 certificate of compliances for projects that were completed. We investigated seven new complaints about potential zoning violations. So that's kind of what's going on there. I don't know if you've noticed, driving by across from Red Hawk, they have started the demolition and reconstruction of that building that's going to be for Crossroads Health that was approved from last year by this board. So that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Heather? Okay, moving on, public participation. What kind of life on public participation today? Anybody on the phone?
No.
No? Okay. All right, new business. Well, I have some new business. I would like to add the pledge of allegiance to our agenda. I'm on Lake County Planning. We say pledge of allegiance. The trustee meeting has pledge of allegiance. I'd like to add it to ours. So think about it.
I thank you. I was actually to bring that up today. I was. I swear to God.
All I had to do was say.
Honest to goodness, I was driving here and I didn't know how we want to do it, but I thank you 100%. I'm in agreement with that. I don't even have to think about it. That's awesome.
Well, do we need to have a motion for to add it to the agenda?
No, I don't think so. No, I could just put that on there for you starting next month.
Any objections?
None.
None.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay, moving on. Any other new business?
None for me.
Riches?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Rich one, Rich two? Old business. Number one, work session to look at the proposed zoning amendment, which has been tabled for a number of months. I won't know how many. What we have to do first is we have to have a motion to get it off of the table and back on to discussion. So if I could have a motion to bring that item back on to discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to untable the proposed zoning text amendments, 1 through 5.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, here we are. So now we're going to turn this over to Heather and have her review some.
Vote on the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I went ahead of myself. Let's have a motion. Let's have a vote on the motion. Heather, do you want to call or roll?
Sure. Mr. Wirtel?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Eifelies?
Yes.
Mr. Rappert?
Yes. Okay, now Heather, would you please give us a summary of each one of the five amendments?
Yeah, sure. So trying to rekindle package this back up for you. I know last year we were looking at a whole lot of different potential updates, going through very specifically line by line, some items. And then it kind of got sidetracked a little bit. What I'm proposing tonight is just looking for the board's authorization. Should you want me to look into some of this stuff a little bit more? I do have some kind of specific housekeeping amendments that I think I wanted to bring to your attention. Those are kind of like items one, amendment number one specifically. It has to do with the general requirements found in section six. If you look at the pages in your packet here on page 6.1, under the 601B2, which has to do with how we regulate agricultural uses in areas where we're allowed to regulate agricultural uses. The one proposed change that I was looking at was in the subsection 2A, eliminating the text that says "and" within a platted subdivision. And I think that needs to come out because in section two, we state that we want to regulate lots that are within a platted subdivision, but we also want to regulate lots that are in an area consisting of 15 or more lots approved under section 711131. So I think that this clarifies that subsection A would apply to either one of those criteria, but as currently written, it would only apply to lots that are within a platted subdivision.
Heather, I had a question. On the third line down, it says, "An agricultural building shall be permitted in conjunction with such use." Should it be a "may?" Or should it be a "shall"?
I like "may" better.
Just continue to read more after that, huh? Well, I mean, I think it implies that it shall be if it meets all the criteria. Maybe Brighty would have a comment on that, if it should change to "may."
I don't know that we have discretion in this regard. So in other words, I think it is a "shall." I think it is mandatory.
You think it should be "shall"?
In other words, the property owner doesn't have to put up an agricultural building, but it's the permission from the township is not required. So it is permitted because it's in conjunction with agriculture, which is exempt, and we don't have to approve it. So we don't have discretion. That's kind of how I see it.
"Shall" it is.
Yeah, and it also goes on to say that it shall not exceed the maximum area permitted.
I got that "shall," and I agree with that one. Okay.
And then on the following page, under subsection D, and this kind of was a thought after we recently updated the number and size of outbuildings that we allow on lots greater than two acres. We now, we put a limit on that, if you recall. Now those lots over two acres are only allowed to have two detached accessory buildings. This section really did not contemplate that. And I thought that, you know, if you're on a larger lot doing something ag, that we should allow them to have maybe one additional building on top of what the maximum is for the district that could be used for agriculture, similar to what we do right now with lots less than the two acres. So this would essentially allow them one additional building.
On top of two.
If they even have to.
Right.
If they have the max.
But it's possible, especially ag.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if you have a, somebody has a house with a detached garage and then another barn that they're not using for ag, and then they want to get chickens or whatever, this would allow them to do that.
Yep.
Yeah. And then the other possible updates in section six would basically be just cross referencing the two home rule resolutions, or two resolutions that the trustees passed. This, if you're looking at 602K, this would just be including in language that references the already approved resolution that the trustees had regarding adult use cannabis operators, cultivators, processors, which they have decided to prohibit in the township. Oftentimes, folks are looking at the zoning for that kind of stuff, so and I thought it would be appropriate to reference that.
Tell them where to look.
Yeah, yeah. And same thing, but not under prohibited, but creating a new section, section 6.06, because again, we're under the general requirement. So there is another resolution that the trustees passed that oftentimes people look in the zoning resolution for, and that has to do with electronical, electric vehicle charging stations. So.
So we're adding that?
Yes, my thought would be just to cross reference that.
Mr. Chairman, I have two questions for Heather. Heather, in looking, maybe this is not the right time, but looking forward in the documents you sent us in 22.5, 22.5 regarding vape and e-cigarette stores under the table of uses in the commercial industrial district. There's no permitted use.
Right. I wanted to talk to you guys about whether or not you wanted to regulate that as a separate use. So I kind of put that in there as a placeholder, just for a point of discussion.
Oh, okay. So what, the reason I saw that, I come back to section six, is it appropriate to make that a prohibited use in residential districts? Vape and e-cigarette stores?
In residential districts?
It wouldn't even apply because it's retail anyway.
Right, right.
So there's no need for that. Am I kind of answering my own question?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Well, and I know we had a previous discussion about those type of, you know, retail businesses.
Yeah.
Right now, under our existing definitions, they just fall under retail. Some communities are deciding that there are negative impacts on their community's health, safety, general welfare, and they're kind of regulating them differently, defining them, and then maybe restricting them or requiring a certain distance between them. So that was something that I brought up that I didn't know if this board wanted to take a look at and regulate that any differently than we would any other kind of retail store.
When we get to that section?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so if I may, the second question I had was unrelated to what you have, but as you read through this, it kind of refreshes. And I read through section six, subsection I, 1, regarding the storage, collection of junk motor vehicles. That's on 6.3. No premises shall be used for storage or collection of junk.
Yes, yes.
Is that tough for your department to enforce?
The 30 days or just the whole junk motor vehicles?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, junk motor vehicles, I mean, they can, sometimes they're difficult to identify, I should say, because junk motor vehicle has a very specific definition.
Yeah.
Has to be three model years or older, apparently inoperable, and extensively damaged. So.
It has to meet all three of those criteria?
It has to meet all three, yeah.
Sure.
So sometimes we can get complaints about, you know, "Oh, my neighbor's got this car. It's been in the driveway. The tags are, you know, haven't been updated in four years, you know. It doesn't run."
Yeah.
So we'll go over, we'll look at it and be like, "Okay, just because," so the tag, you know, apparently inoperable, right? Because you can't put it on the street without current tags. It might meet the three model years or older. Visually, you can look at it if it's an older car and tell, but where's the extensive damage?
They still wash it, they still maintain it.
Yeah, yeah.
But it can't be in the yard, can it? Visible without plates? Doesn't have to be in a garage or something?
No, we don't, we don't regulate if it doesn't have current tags. It's a violation. I know a lot of cities do something like that, but the only.
There's a truck down on Ravenna Road. The guy puts his garbage can, his trash bin right behind the plates, so you can't tell. That truck hasn't moved in five years.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's some vehicles like that around the township. There's been a few that we were kind of, you know, does it meet it, you know, kind of thing, but we've had success of people getting rid of them, you know, when we have been able to identify them. It does take them, their willingness to do it, you know, cooperation. Sometimes it's thinking outside of the box and helping them come up with ideas of like, maybe somebody would buy it from you, like a scrap, or like you could donate it somewhere and maybe do a tax write-off, or sometimes people just don't know what their options are.
Fair.
Yeah.
They get caught up in time.
Yeah.
The reason I ask, there's some properties you drive by, you wonder, it's just a lot of junk sitting on the property.
Oh, like junk as well?
Kind of across the street. That's one example. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Is that it for 6.0?
Yeah, that was, that was everything under the first, what I called amendment number one. And then the second section, this was kind of brought up previously again, looking at, this is the residential district section, the table 15.02-1. We have lots of conditional uses in here that have been in the zoning resolution for quite some time, that aren't typically, that I've, when I've looked at other communities' residential zoning, you know, residential zoning codes, aren't things that they list in their standard, like R1 and R4 districts, like we have all throughout the township, like arboretums, camps. I think the community park playground would fall under our definition of government and public use.
Heather, what if, what if, again, just trying to think down the road and out of the box a little bit, what if a developer came in and wanted to put a park or a playground within a community?
And they do that?
Absolutely, they do that.
I used to live on Colridge Road off of 84 in Concord, and Ryan Holmes built a development there, and they had a, they made a community park. My kids played there all the time.
Especially with green space and things like that, and that being part of it. Because I saw that when it's one of the things that popped up, and you know, having done develops, you think about it, there's an opportunity for that.
Good question.
You know?
Yeah, well, I'm not, I would like to, if we leave that in, I think we should review then what some of the standards are and make sure we have a definition for it.
Okay.
Yeah. And just, you know, the metro parks isn't bound by this. So what they're doing, just so everyone, if there's any question regarding, you know, that, the metro parks, they're their own political entity, you know, they, they don't have to follow our zoning resolution. I understand that completely. And even with that, I think I brought up previously too, like under our RCD or R2, our planned unit development districts, which are not in here right now, those communities might also like to set aside land for a park or a playground, and I don't think that that's specified in there either. So that's something that I could take a look at and propose as well, keep that in, and maybe look at adding that, and we can look at some of the provisions around that. But when we are also looking, you know, when we were kind of reviewing the commercial districts, we were looking at some of these same, similar, you know, home for aging, hospice care facilities, residential care facilities. Are these really appropriate in our R1 and R4 districts? Do we want nursing homes to be located there? So I was proposing that we kind of strike some of these out. I don't understand really why we would allow museums in the R1 and R4 district either. That seems to be not like a residential use, so that you would really want next to you. So those are, those are some of my thoughts on maybe changing some of the principal permitted uses here. And John, I'll keep in that neighborhood park that's on that page too, yeah.
Question, Mr. Chairman. Heather, under accessory uses, what is type B family daycare home, type B as opposed, I didn't know there were two types of family daycare.
Yeah, those are the ones where I think they do childcare, like for three to five children. That's it. It's like a home daycare.
Type B?
Yes.
And otherwise, the type A is?
They would have more children, I believe, and we don't allow that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we define that, but so that, the. I can go to the definition.
So that'd be if somebody's, they're running, is it considered a business, or if they're watching three to five kids at their house, you have friends?
It's a business.
Right, it's a business.
One to six children.
It's a business.
Yeah, it is a business. Yeah, they do get a license from the state, from the state of Ohio. It's actually one to six children.
Okay.
One to six.
Because they're watching in their home.
Yes.
That happens quite a bit.
Yeah, I mean, that isn't even anything that, and it's listed as an accessory use. So if they're happening, we don't even really know if they are, to be honest. I've never had anyone come and apply for a permit to do one in their home. So if there are any in Concord right now, they, could they usually kind of fly under the radar unless there's a problem, right?
Right.
Unless all of a sudden, there's like a parking situation, and the neighbors start complaining, or that kind of thing.
Now, the question I have, once again, could you explain to me why we have to have surface extraction of sand, gravel, and other earth materials?
Well, I know Brighty had looked into that and did respond. Do you want to?
Right, that's a new Ohio Vice Code.
So we have to do it?
Correct.
Does it have to be in all the districts?
No, but it's a, it's, you have to account for like a conditional use of it.
Okay.
I can put on here, for instance, ORC.
So you don't ask again, yeah. That's okay.
I knew there was a reason, but I did not know what it was.
The other thing I had thrown on here under the accessory uses, and this was, you know, now that I'm looking at it, I meant to do it as more of a placeholder, because I was going to talk about that later, but possibly looking at regulating some small souls.
So one of the things that I think that, and maybe I don't know if this is the right time to talk about this, but I think it might be, I know you've probably heard a lot about this lately, maybe in data centers, you know, this is going to be a more, you're going to hear about it more and more and more.
Okay.
I can assure you of that. We're actually in a very good location for data centers because of our location, our proximity, power, right? Power is a big thing. I versed myself pretty well on them for my business, but I think it's something that we're going to have to consider, thinking about down the road.
For our commercial districts?
I do, yeah. For commercial industrial. It's going to be mostly the commercial industrial type. They can go anywhere, but it's going to be something we're going to have to address. The main thing that needs to be considered is the power demand on the community. That's number one. But it's something I can assure you that's going to, it's going to, we're going to face it. And they're great, they're good. They don't bring a lot of jobs or anything like that, but it's, it's tax revenue.
They're housing a bunch of servers in there, and then they have a couple guys working on computers.
Drawing a bunch of power.
Yeah.
But somebody's going to want to put one in our community. I can assure you of that.
Okay.
There's nothing bad. There's nothing bad associated with it. There's secures, all get out, there's cameras everywhere.
Yeah, no, my father worked at the Verizon data center.
No windows at all, very cool, very, very cool.
High AC.
High AC, yeah, exactly correct. That's exactly correct. So just food for thought for you?
Okay.
Since we're talking about this.
Yeah, yeah, because that leads us right into the next commercial industrial district section.
I said, I might have jumped it.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay. Leads us right into that.
Segway, right?
Yeah, yeah. So we kind of already talked about this, the vape e-cigarette stores, as to whether or not that's something that we want to treat any different than retail. I, I know Painesville Township has recently passed a moratorium on allowing any more in their community, because they would like to take a step back and look at how they would like to regulate those. Their trustees in an article that I read in the News Herald had indicated their concern about health, safety, and then just them taking up valuable, like prime real estate and vacant storefronts. So they, they wanted to take a pause. I have a feeling they must have got a few in a concentrated area, potentially. I know in the community I live, there's quite a few, and the residents don't seem to be happy with them. We do have two kind of vape e-cigarette stores. Well, one's, one's a hemp store, and one is clearly a vape store over at Concord Plaza. So.
And are two separate businesses?
Totally separate, yeah. Different owners, different, different businesses too. The one is purely more like a vape store, lots of stuff in there. And the other guy is a little higher end, like, but he's selling a lot of hemp products, and probably the e-cigarette type stuff too. But. So that was, that, you know, I know there was maybe some concern that I heard in the past about why we would, we would treat them any differently from any other retail store, but so that's something I could look into a little bit more if you guys wanted to. Oh, City of Painesville was also going to pass some regulations on them. I don't know if they actually got adopted. It did start with council, but they were going to try to restrict it to certain areas within their community, and then set a distance requirement between them. So those are some of the things that they were looking at.
That was going to be my question, Heather, is the suggestion being, would be suggesting it's certain district where it's restricted to or not at all.
Yeah.
I don't think, can they restrict it at all? They're already here.
I mean, the ones that are already here would, if they were, you know, would be fine to remain. If, if we were allowed to prohibit them, then it would just prevent any new ones from coming in. We can think about that.
Yeah.
You don't need to, yeah.
Well, would we prohibit within distance from schools and things of that sort?
Maybe, I mean, I don't know. I don't even know if our, I'm trying to think where that might actually come into play, other than maybe by St. Gabe's and that side of town.
They're already there.
Yeah, yeah. Because I'm thinking our other school locations really are not close to commercial corridors, but yeah, you could, yeah. Yeah, if you were worried about kids and access to them, and trying to keep, you know, children away from those, you know, you could reasonably, I think, do a distance from schools.
Personally, I don't like to see them any further in the township, period, but that's just personal opinion.
I don't like them either, just because of what I, but then we don't regulate.
Business, right?
Smokes.
Right.
Cigarettes.
Right.
Yeah.
So. But could we, well, again, do, do they put an age limit on vaping?
I think they do.
By, by sales?
Yeah, by sales, they do.
Yeah.
Is it 21 or 18?
I think it's.
Yeah, I don't know that.
I thought I would do this. I can't remember if it's 18 or 21. I guess I was biased by the answer, though. I thought it was, I think it might be, no, I'll have to look.
18.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either, but.
I mean, cigarettes are still 18, right?
Is it? I don't, I don't know. I haven't. Whatever. Okay, moving on.
And previously, we were looking at maybe changing the automotive services.
Are we on to number four now?
Oh, no, we're still looking at the table.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yep.
Yeah.
I apologize.
That's okay. Still on that same table.
Yep. I jumped.
Under the commercial section. When we were originally going through some of this last year, there was some discussion by the board about making automotive services a conditional use in the BX?
Yes.
And then taking them out of the gateway business.
And out of gateway, yes.
Yeah, so I just carried that.
Okay, so you're doing conditional use in the business interchange? All right, so that one.
Yeah, the gateway business district, for those who don't, or that's Auburn Road, really. Yeah, there's no frontage on Cryo, that's where the hospital is, all the way, almost all the way down to the roundabout.
To the roundabout?
Yeah.
On Auburn?
Yeah, almost, yeah, one parcel.
GB.
Yeah, and then on the south side of, it's all broken up. I don't know why we have our districts so broken up. Yeah. So basically. So basically along Auburn Road.
Okay.
Which I don't think anyone would probably want to, um, put an automotive type service in that area anyway. You just don't get that visibility.
Right.
South of, uh, Fierito Dental as well.
Okay.
Is where you got some of that gateway business. So.
Okay.
Um.
And then.
Uh, amendment number four. I know we talked about this previously, the gas and oil well regulations. We have no ability to actually regulate the location of them. So this really should be taken out of the resolution where, you know, we don't, townships really, they don't have the authority to regulate where they're put in. The only thing we could do is, and is regulate any kind of new construction in relation, in proximity to an existing oil and gas well.
There's already restrictions on that, though, isn't there?
Probably at the state level, yes.
I think the state level is fifteen hundred feet, I think you can.
I don't know what the numbers are.
It's not fifteen, it's not, it's not.
I thought it was a hundred.
It's only a couple hundred feet. It's a hundred or two hundred, yeah.
Yeah, there's a subdivision, Jake, right.
But at this point, I was just.
Fifteen hundred feet, one well, the well, I think it is, yeah.
Yeah. This point, I was just trying to clean up like things that we're not enforcing that we really can't do. There's no point in leaving this in here. And then under amendment number five, that was looking at the satellite receiving antennas, the dish type. I believe this is really outdated technology.
Yes.
Um, that we're not seeing these large three meter, you know, satellite dishes put on properties anymore. It's just not, it's, it's not what we're doing. It's not what people are doing, now that it's on digital, right? Streaming everything.
And we really don't care about the little one meter ones that go on roofs.
They don't use them, do they?
I don't know. Doesn't dish still?
Dish still does, yeah, dish still.
Dish still uses them.
We don't regulate those.
No, I don't think they do.
Yeah.
Who was the other one? They had two. Dish and somebody else was using them.
Starlink has one, but it's very small. It's flat panel, small. You're going to see those popping up. They're not, you, you wouldn't even know it's there. In fact, you'd know it's there.
Do they, where do they mount, where do they mount those usually?
What's that?
Where do they mount those?
You can mount it. I mean, it's a flat paneling. I mean, you can mount it in your roof, but, but I say, it looks like an air vent.
Yeah.
I mean, this big, you know, it's flat, or, um, I mean, you can put them anywhere, you know, to, I don't know how to describe it to you. You could put it on a pole if you wanted to and you would look like a bird feeder.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's seriously, that's all it is.
Yeah.
Um, I've got some property, but Canada, I do work in, in.
Best letters start, like, that's my bird feeder.
Right, right, well, I mean, that's, I'm serious, that's what it looks, you know. Try to be descriptive so you can get what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, thank you. I didn't know about that.
I don't think we're going to have that be an issue of, people wouldn't even know it's mounted there.
Right. Yep. Okay, and then the other two, two items that I wanted to talk to you about and get some direction on whether or not we would want to pursue any of this, um, the one being small solar facilities. So there was a House Bill passed and that became effective in April of twenty twenty-three that gave townships the authority to regulate what they deemed small solar. Though Ohio revised code defined that as a facility with a single interconnection to the grid and a capacity of less than fifty megawatts. Anything over the fifty megawatts, the county has a say in where those would be regulated, or where those would go. And the Ohio Power Siting Board is, um, the entity that those applications would be submitted through for review, for projects over the fifty megawatts. But, um, I recently attended the Ohio Township Association Winter Conference and I sat in on a really good session regarding that. Um, solar is still expanding in Ohio. Um, there are no projects planned right now in Lake County. Um, I know, but in Ashtria Bula, there are a handful that are being planned or reviewed that are in the queue. Um, we've not looked at small solar, so, um, without any kind of regulations, that means we're not regulating it. And if anyone were to want to come in and put one in, that they could basically just do that. Um, um. So they're asking, you know, townships really need to take a look at, do we want to allow or restrict some kind of small solar, like? Um, I think that what I heard too at this session that I attended is the term small solar really isn't small either. So they're getting projects that come in just at like forty-nine megawatts. And these projects take over substantial amount of acreage. Um, you have some communities where, um, they're buying the land and that the solar farm, the small, the, the solar facility is the primary use of the property. So they're buying property or they're leasing property specifically just to put solar panels on. And it could take up, you know, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty acres um, or more. And then, then you have smaller, you know, solar things like that, where it could just be an accessory use to, on a property. So for example, in a residential district, there's a house and they want to put solar panels on the roof. So rooftop solar, or they want to do a ground mounted, you know, solar panel that it's connected, it's just powering their house. And that would be considered more of an accessory use. So do we want to kind of look at that? Do, do we want to have any regulations for that? Any standards, you know, if, if we were going to allow that as an accessory use in a residential district? Should there be a setback for any kind of ground-based or height restriction? Some communities have gotten really nitpicky with like that, and they've said it can only be installed in the, in the side yard or the rear yard, which may not work for every site, depending on which way the, the sun hits the property, but. Um, and then on larger scale projects, they've talked about buffering and landscaping and, um, yeah, things like that. Um, should it be permitted? Should it be conditionally permitted? What size of this type of project would your community kind of accept?
Yeah, I, I, I think we ought to find out how big of an area it takes up fifty megawatts.
Yeah.
And I personally wouldn't want a fifty megawatt place anywhere in Concord Township.
And I can probably get some better idea, you know, some information about that. I know there's a lot of models out there, um, just some model language. Even Michigan has a really nice, um, guide um, with some graphics that I can share with you at a future meeting to maybe.
Are we going to regulate people putting them on the roofs?
I don't know. That, that's what I'm asking you guys. Do you want to? Do we want to just? Yeah.
Because you're right. I mean, I, I, um, you know, it, it has to be, there's calculations that they do for rooftops. If they're even, you know, if they even give back to what, what they cost. And they're not, they're not inexpensive, you know, to do it. And just, they, the, the solar insulation company, the solar company that's providing them. I have a friend that does this, that's why I know he does it in Texas. I mean, they, they actually have a structural engineer come out, not part of our township, but it's part of their process. But they have to take and make sure that the house constructually hold the panels.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't do this willy-nilly.
Right, right.
You know, um, but there are certain sides of the house that, that is better, more beneficial, obviously, east, west, north, south. Um, especially in our hemisphere, you know, um, where it's beneficial. So it'd be tough to regulate it on a rooftop.
Yeah.
To a degree.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it is an alternative energy.
Right. Yeah. It's one thing that we, you know, our comprehensive plans not address this topic, alternative energy and, and what do we want for our community? It's, you know, doesn't address solar, so we really can't get much direction from, from the comp plan. Um, but the other, the other thought, like even with, you know, if you weren't going to maybe necessarily regulate the rooftop, you could add in some provisions about decommissioning when you have, you know, solar panels that aren't working anymore, that aren't connected, that aren't functioning. You could add in language that would require them to remove those type of structures.
We had.
Because that can be a concern.
Mayor had that one street north on six fifteen that had a whole street where the, the solar panels were on the houses.
Mm-hmm.
On the north side, they were on the front of the house. On the south side, they were on the back of the house.
Yeah.
None of them have them up in there anymore.
Oh, really?
Well, no, because.
Northeast Ohio, that's.
Oh, yeah.
That's right. That's right. We have.
I don't think we're going to have a big issue with solar.
How many days a year, so.
I don't think we're going to have a big issue with solar and, uh, it'd be interesting to see that progressive field. You know, I wonder how much that draws.
Yeah.
How much effort is it to the grid?
The one on two seventy-one. progressives got a, got a huge layout. And so does the New Cleveland Clinic on six fifteen.
Yeah.
They have it.
Right, massive.
So.
It's massive.
It's right by that substation too, they're on two seventy-one, so that makes sense.
Well, the substation is there for the, for the buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But they're putting it in that grid that's tied into that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That, that gives them direct link. Because Painesville just got a enormous, they had a huge grant.
Had it, but I think it's.
Oh, it's still there. I talked to Tony.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's still there. It's not gone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and I looked at, you know, I, I did look at some of the Lake County town, uh, townships real quick, just to see if anybody adopted anything, like Perry Township. They just added to their resolution that they're going to allow ground mounted solar panels as an accessory use in their residential districts, very basic. And then they're, they're requiring them to basically meet the, the setback standards that already apply in the district. And that's all they're doing to regulate.
Who's doing that?
That's Perry Township.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it could be as simple as that, you know, or a lot, you know, other communities get pretty nitpicky on some stuff, you know, depending on what the flavor of the community is.
Right? In the business, business category, if a business, an existing business decided it
Yeah.
five acres or two acres of solar panels, we'd have to cover that too.
Yeah, yeah. That would give you the ability to regulate it then at least. Yeah. Yeah.
So Heather, you're suggesting, uh, to Rich's point, one for commercial purposes and one for residential purposes? Right?
Uh, yeah, I mean, yeah, we could do them differently. Yeah, we could bake them right into those sections, like whatever we wanted to apply to the residential, we put in section fifteen, and if we were going to regulate it in commercial, yeah, right in there. Yeah, it could be different.
I mean, it could be for, for profit business. Why would you, if commercials doing it, right? It's a for-profit.
Right. Well, or they might just be at, you know, maybe they want to power their, something with ground mounted solar.
Then it's more of an.
Accessory use.
I'm distinguishing the accessory use to someone for, for for profit.
Right.
Oh, okay, okay. So it's the primary use.
It's a tough one to get for a profit.
Right, yeah, right?
Yeah.
The return, the majority of it is, you're putting it back in to get less of your.
And if you get too much putting into the house, then you put it back on to the grid.
To the grid, right.
So that just takes it away.
So do we want, yeah, like, back to what you're saying, like for profit, like large tracts of land being consumed by solar panels? Is that a, a land use that it would be desirable in Concord? Like, is just the primary use of the property? I don't know. They've done some unique things in different areas where they do, um, like farmers are leasing out their farms to these solar companies and they're, it's called, oh, shoot, like Voltronics. I don't even know. They're, they're still farming around these ground based solar panels. They have sheep going around them, like that are grazing under them. And so they're trying to like dual use the land because they know that there's prime agricultural land and there's certain crops apparently that you can grow, you know, that might be under these ground. Yeah, there's a lot of different things going on.
Heather, on the same note, what about windmills? We don't have anything on that, right?
Correct, right. And small winter turbines, we don't have that. It's actually, the authority comes from the same section of the resident, yeah. Small wind farms.
So what are you going to take? Can you, I guess, do some find the content, find the text, find the content to put into those categories for us and we'll have, we'll review them, is that?
Yeah, yeah, I can come back with a little bit more information about, um, size and scale, maybe show some pictures. It sounds like, you know, I mean, yeah, and then we can have a discussion on, do we want them as principal uses or do we think it's only appropriate as an accessory use?
Yeah.
Do we want to set any standards? Is what we already have in there?
Do some research.
Yeah, okay.
Do some research.
Okay.
I will as well, because that's interesting.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay, the second one is?
Um, yeah, and then the next one um, was potentially looking at creating a new section in the zoning resolution, um, to consolidate some, you know, existing regulations we have and maybe coming up with a few new ones and creating a new section called temporary uses, um, like events. We really, we don't define like a temporary use in our zoning resolution, but we have a couple different sections that allow for temporary structures. Like in the residential district, we talk about allowing construction equipment and, and, um, that's why I always bring my zoning resolution. Um, we, uh, let me just go to fifteen oh three real quick, I apologize. Oh. Yeah, the temporary structures that are in the residential district talks about basically the pods, the storage pods. When people have to rent those for a few months or whatever, all those regulations are right here. And they're only, we only regulate them or allow them in, in a residential district. And then, um, we talk about a farm market stand, which is kind of a temporary use under the ag section. Um, in section twenty-nine, which is the parking section, we talk about construction trailers that are allowed to be on the property while construction is happening, like for an office, you know. Um, and then we have some regulations regarding temporary signs and, and the number of garage sales someone can have. We do get a lot of questions from people about that. And I've looked at some other communities and they've kind of packaged it, all those kind of temporary uses, structures, all kind of in a, in a section together. One thing that recent, that came up, I think over the summer, too, that really got me kind of looking at this as well, was, um, well, two things actually. One was the request from the owner of, uh, Sunny Street. Tony Milan wanted to start doing some, hosting some, like, events in the parking lot, right off the patio, like some, a band and a stage and, you know, all, that, that kind of thing. And, um, he ended up going to the V Z A and they approved him a variance with some limitations on that. Um, but then we have other churches that have festivals and I know they're, um, and, you know, cruisins and, and stuff like that. And I think generally zoning is not an issue with it, but sometimes the township doesn't know about these events. And I, I know talking, I've been talking a little bit with our deputy fire chief about that too, and, you know, what their concern is with some of these, like, even the races that happen that get hosted in Concord, where you have a thousand people over the metro parks on a Saturday, like, we don't necessarily know about that. And, you know, from a safety standpoint, they need to be prepared for those kind of events. So, um, I, I was thinking, um, of putting in some regulations that would allow for some, some landowners to have temporary events that would require them to maybe submit an application, a certain amount of days beforehand, um, just, and some basic, like, you know, checks and balances regarding awareness, you know, that if they're going to put up any kind of temporary structures, that it's going to be removed after, you know, so we have information on who's responsible for it, what kind of things they're going to be doing there. So the police and the fire also know about it. Um.
And what do you do then? You make them, the police and fire aware of it if they come to you and say, hey, so if the metro park says somebody's going to have a, a, a trail race up the Greenway? Right off of Grove Road.
Yeah, and, and again, I don't even know if we can make the metro.
I was just going to say, right, exactly. And that's what I, that's what I was going with that. I, I said it like, hmm.
Yeah, I know. That was just an example.
Right, no, I get it, a hundred percent.
But even like, um, the hospital, U H, last year, they set up a tent and did some kind of employee something, you know, little party in the parking lot kind of thing. And it was like, I only knew about it because they were putting up a tent, right? And they, and the tent installer called me, hey, do they need a zoning permit to put this tent up? Because they know they have to go to the building department. So it's like, well, no, we don't, we don't, you know, it's, we, we've kind of in the past, they've always just allowed these kind of temporary uses to go on and I don't see any issue with that. Um, but I think we're, we're at a point where the township is not as, you know, rural and, you know, there's a lot more people here and things going on and it's more complex. So like, it, it's important, I think, to know, you know, if people are hosting events or where we would allow people to even have temp, you know,
Would somebody have to?
Temporary events.
I'm, I'm going to be the, the advocate, the most advocate on this one here.
Yeah.
Does that mean somebody for a graduation party would have to have a, a?
No, absolutely not. No, yeah, and I've seen, no, those are good questions. Yeah, yeah.
You know, there's.
Yeah.
You know, I'm thinking about having one for my daughters this year, so that's a great question to ask.
No, I think I've seen some townships write in, like they're, straight in their resolutions, like in residential districts, if you're having a, a party that's, you know, like, that you don't have to, you know, do anything with the township.
How about the party we had out here last summer?
Any township functions would likely just, they wouldn't have to submit their own. Any township functions would likely just, they wouldn't have to submit their own application, right?
Community Day?
Yeah.
Was it Community Days? I don't know.
Every, every August.
We're already involved in all of them, right? Yeah, so like, as far as the township complying with their own zoning resolution, I mean, when we do projects, yes, we do try to plan projects to make sure it meets the zoning resolution, when they built the fire station, they laid out the, the site plan and the setbacks and everything, they looked at the zoning resolution, we've worked with the architecture and the engineers and tried to comply with that, the same thing we do with Station Two and things like that, but at the end of the day, we're not gonna charge a fee or require, you know, the township to submit, you know, for a township event. I know, like, um, Craig, the, the owner of Maple Ridge Garden Center over here, last year, he wanted to have a petting zoo. And, um, and it was just like, it was like a wedding or a weekend thing, and he wanted to have this petting zoo, and, you know, I, um, I was having a difficult time communicating to his manager that that was not permitted. And it turned into this back and forth kind of, you know, disagreement, and it would be a lot more helpful if there was something in the zoning that kind of regulated these temporary uses, special events, I think in a case like that.
That was open to the public. He was trying to, he was using it as a.
Yeah, he was just like, hey, this weekend, we're gonna have these animals here, come pet the ducks, kind of thing.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
A good draw.
Yeah, but, and with that, he was setting up areas for these animals, like for them to be outside, yeah, and I didn't know, we didn't know anything about, where are they gonna go? Are they gonna be in the parking lot? Are they gonna be in the fire lane? Are they gonna be in a spot where traffic circulation is?
Right.
You know, so those are, you know, yeah. So this is some of the challenges that we, I've kind of had regarding that.
That's a challenge.
I get it, we're a township, we don't want to over-regulate, um, so I definitely would keep all of that in mind if we were going to do anything. I think simple, um, would be the way to go if we were going to move forward with any additional regulations. I still think maybe cleaning up some of the existing stuff we have and putting it in a temporary use section might be appropriate. Now, whether or not we extend that and, and, and regulate special events in various districts or on certain properties, we can, we, obviously, we can discuss that much more further as to what may or may not be appropriate.
Heather, a question on that, um, a number of years back, I was in Camarillo, California, we had friends out there. And Camarillo is a city, but it had a ordinance that they had an empty lot, like it was paved, and on weekends, anybody in town that wanted to sell a car would drive it down there, park it, and put it in the windshield, what, what, you know, what the price was, what features and everything, and just leave it there. And if somebody was interested, they'd call you, but they'd have a dozen cars there on a weekend. Would that be allowed? And would, if it is, would it be under here, in this section? There are no structures, it was just people bringing a bunch of cars and, you know.
I guess you could regulate that as a temporary use.
Yeah.
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 If you wanted to encourage, if you wanted that to happen. Um.
They did it every weekend, every weekend.
In a public space or private?
Yeah, who owned it?
It was a public space, but it was paved.
Oh, so the, the city owned it and they just allowed?
I don't know who owned it, to tell you the truth.
Like a used car lot for the, for the weekend.
The neighbors, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I get it, yeah.
Get a lot more attention on your car there, it was in a busy area as opposed to your driveway.
It's your driveway, yeah.
It's kind of a good idea, actually.
So that's, that's.
That's it?
That's a lot, but that's it, yeah.
Could we vote on any of these? Uh, the first one.
I don't think we are, are we?
The first one was pretty clean, wasn't it?
Number one.
Yeah.
Oh, no, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna vote on these tonight.
No, 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 yeah.
I thought that one was pretty cut and dry.
Well.
Mr. Chen, but out of five, the, I think the only one, I mean, right, for me, is where the, where do we restrict vape e-cigarette stores, so is, is the question. The rest, the suggestions here from Heather are really, really good. As we move forward.
So do we clean these up for next meeting?
Well, I can, we can have a further discussion about the vape e-cigarette stores at the next meeting, if you want. Um, and let, I'll, I'll keep these other ones, you know, the one through five, you know, just as they are, and we'll, you know, we won't, unless you guys want to talk about those further. Um, and then if you want, it sounds like you would like me to look into the small solar for the next meeting, potentially?
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
If, if that's enough time.
Yeah, I mean, I can probably get back with some, you know, it's not gonna be a final, hey, this is what you should approve, but yeah, I mean, I could definitely come back at the next meeting with some small solar stuff, we can.
Okay.
Um, I don't know that I can tackle the temporary uses and events at the same time, maybe we hold off on that a little bit, I could work on that in the background and bring it in a subsequent meeting.
Because I could do that. Then you could go down a rabbit hole on that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So if you'd like, I can come back next month with some information about the small solar. And, uh, I'll do a little bit more research on the vape and maybe come up with some suggestions for you.
Thank you.
And then, uh, what's this, March, April, maybe May have a public hearing?
Oh, I don't know, I can't, I don't think we can determine it at this point, yeah, when we would do a public hearing.
Okay.
I think we need to, it might take a few months to, to get through some of the small solar.
Well, we, we don't have to do the small solar, solar at the same time, do we?
No, but the other ones are kind of, you know, minor, so I mean, it's up to you guys.
You're saying hold on to those and just do it all at once, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean.
Solar along with it?
Yeah.
Hey, I'm okay.
I mean, it's up to the, the board if you would want to move forward with some of them sooner than later, yeah, I'm, I apologize, Hiram, I wasn't following you on that, but yeah, we could talk about it next month and see where we're at with amendments one through five.
I would wait until next month to just go from there, because I like to do some more digging myself.
Yeah. And we're short, you know, a board member too that kind of missed some of this conversation this evening, so, yeah. I'd rather get it right than move forward too soon.
All right, any other comments, suggestions on the work session?
Interesting.
If not, doesn't have to be tabled, did we say continued? Instead of tabled? No one to table it anymore.
No, yeah, you don't have to, yeah, we'll just put it on the agenda for next month.
Put it on agenda for next month?
We'll do the work session next month again, yep.
Okay, and then number two, the, uh, designated final date for completion of the sidewalk. Uh, that, that agenda item has been tabled until July twenty twenty-six. And we're now in twenty twenty-five, so we gotta wait for that one to come up again. Next meeting is April first, twenty twenty-five. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second his motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.